This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire City Council Meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
This special meeting of the Eau Claire City Council will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember John?
Here.
Thorpeman?
Here.
Van Hayden?
Here.
T-Walt?
Here.
Strobel?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Kinkamer?
Here.
Kincaid?
Here.
Emanuel?
Here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome, everyone, to this special meeting of the Eau Claire City Council. This is the one meeting of the year that the council gets to concentrate on itself. This meeting is for us and about us. In this meeting, we organize ourselves, we swear in our new members, and we set ourselves on a high and lofty path for our service in the coming year. So for the next forty-five minutes or so, we get to concentrate on just us. I appreciate all the hard work that went into getting you all here with me today, and I also appreciate that there are so many department directors here today. We're a team, and we appreciate that you came to our organizational meeting. We do have an agenda before us, which begins with Item One, which is a swearing-in ceremony. The Honorable Court Commissioner Nathan Novak will administer the oath of office to the members who were elected in the most recent election. Mr. Novak.
First of all, let me congratulate the newly-elected and re-elected members of the city council. I have some memories of this place, having worked here for a number of years back in the nineties. Some of them are good memories, a lot of them are, and the bad memories are when I left here at 1:30 and 2:00 in the morning, talked to Dale and said, "There's not many of those meetings anymore," so that's a good thing. But I do have a real appreciation of the hard work and the long hours that you do spend on very important issues for our community, and I personally wanted to thank you for your service to the Eau Claire community. When I did come in the door today, as President Kincaid mentioned, I'm the Court Commissioner for Eau Claire County, and I was invited. It wasn't that all the other judges declined, as one council member in particular might have intimated to me, but anyway, I am privileged to be here today. At this time, I'd asked the candidates, or actually elected council members, to stand at this time for the administration of the oath. Would you please raise your right hand at this time? I state your name.
I am Mr. Eric Mitchell.
Having been elected to the Eau Claire City Council,
I am being elected to the Eau Claire City Council.
Do hereby solemnly swear
That I solemnly swear
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
And I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of this office
And will faithfully discharge the duties of this office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
The Court Commissioner is just finishing up by signing the certificates, so we are duly elected and sworn city council members, and I welcome all of you. Now, as has become a tradition in our organizational meeting, our next order of business is a council president's message, or called the Charge to Council. Don't worry, it's not like charge on. It's heartfelt, and as I said, this meeting is about us, so it's me talking to you, to the ten of you. The brief purpose of this charge, as I said, is to spend a little time together about reflecting about our year and our responsibilities as public servants. First, welcome to my fellow council members, and now veteran council members, to another year of service to Eau Claire citizens. Congratulations on your victory at the polls. I look forward to working with each of you as you advance your ideas to move Eau Claire forward. And welcome to our new council member. We congratulate you on your victory, and we are here to help you begin your public service. You may call on any one of us for questions or support at any time. And to all of us, a message for reflection. The part of our personalities that calls us to run for office and win is the same part that makes us great elected officials. The strong-willed, thick-skinned, self-confident, public-minded, future-oriented, creative part of our personalities is exactly what this job needs. We have strong feelings about issues, not always the same issue and not always equally shared. Sometimes these strong issues run up against each other, and when they do, as they have many times, we work through those times as a collective body and emerge to make a decision for the good of Eau Claire. A few principles of public leadership help us do that well. The first: be personally responsible. Be responsible. If you say you'll do something, do it. Listen, show up, find out. By this, I mean every day's service to citizens, not the blunt measure of the public will found in an occasional referendum, in which there are winners and losers, and ill-will often resides, but the constant, instead, the constant and the little interactions with citizens who, as a result of working with you, will see us as leaders who take responsibility to serve them as a matter of course, as a matter of our everyday duty. Second: have integrity. Work in the sunshine. All of us know what that means. Public leaders don't work in the dark. We are very open about what we're doing and when we're going to do it. Third: be fair. We are often called on to weigh the interests of the individual against that of the public good and to apply our best judgment therein. All kinds of issues are viewed differently by the individual and the public, and it is a trying exercise to balance those two interests, and works best and are lucky when we can meet both of them. But this can't always be done, so a decision, a judgment, is required. Often, there are not qualitative metrics either to help us make this decision. There are no numbers that play into our decisions, many of them. Some other kind of data is required, data that weighs a plurality of interests and ultimately relies on what a political philosopher named William Galston calls "the courageous judgment." The judgment, in the view of many, that judgment, in the view of many, should be grounded on fairness, weighing all the interests against the public good, against your own passion, grounded on an ethic of fairness. Four, as David Bornstein says in his book, "How to Change the World: Social Entrepreneurs and the Power of New Ideas," government's primary strength is its ability to represent the whole population and foster conditions to promote fairness. I can't agree more. If we rely on fairness as an ethical doctrine, the courageous judgment is almost always Also, respect each other. Public leadership is as hard for your fellow council members as it is for you. Every decision we make affects someone's life, someone we usually see in the grocery store or at the gas station the very next day. There are no easy buttons in this job. We feel passionately about things, and we have creative things that we want to try. This passion and creativity causes us to fight hard for this or that, but we can't let that passion for an idea spill over into attacks on each other. Instead, when we fight, and we will, we fight over issues, not with each other. Also, be fiercely kind. Be brave enough to show kindness to the people we serve. Against what might be our first instinct to snipe at an unreasonable citizen or a hard-headed colleague, we will be better leaders if we pull back from this instinct. Though I recognize kindness is a messy business, kind people often upset the rules of society, but so what? I haven't heard the world complaining that there just are too many kind people. Be kind. Lastly, work with staff. We all know that a good working relationship between staff and the electeds is an essential part of public service and is built on a two-way street. From our side of the street, we can do a few things. Our duty is to be forthcoming with concerns. Tell them what's on our mind. Be clear about our expectations. Be generous with thank-yous, and be a barometer of community issues that they may not see coming, but we do in our interactions with citizens every day. Be that barometer so we can be a good team and make this city even greater. The complexity of the demands and rewards of public service can't be reduced to a letter grade. A-plus or C-minus just doesn't capture the breadth of our job. Instead, our roles as public servants are all the things I just spoke about and more. It is daunting, and we need to help each other. If we practice responsibility, integrity, fairness, respect, and kindness, people will see that government is a force for good, so they will trust it, and with trust comes stability, and with stability comes the best possibility of building a good life in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. We are privileged to govern Eau Claire during an exciting time. We are very privileged to govern Eau Claire during this exciting time, and we are privileged to work together for our American democracy. We are a city that works. Thank you all. Now that we're all inspired, we'll get down to some business. Just a moment. Hear, hear. Tell all of you. The next order of business on our agenda this afternoon is the election of the city council president. I'll just go over the protocols. Vice President, oh yeah, the election of the president, that's a whole other deal. Just go over the process a little bit. The vice president serves one-year terms, being elected by the body, by us, every April, at our organizational meeting. The duty of the vice president is to serve in place of the president in the event of her absence or her inability to serve. The vice president is elected by secret ballot. Nominations are taken from the floor with no second required. The nominee, however, must agree to the nomination. The presiding officer will ask three times for nomination, as is Robert's Rules of Order. Once the nominations are closed, the nominees or nominee may speak to their nomination. Ballots will be distributed. Council members can vote for one candidate. Ballots will be collected and counted by the city attorney and the city clerk. The city clerk will announce the results of the voting. A nominee needs six votes to win. Do you have any questions? If there is only one nomination, the presiding officer will seek unanimous consent for that Nominations are now in order for the office of vice president. Councilmember Kinkamer.
Thank you, Madam President. It would be my honor to, oh, actually, I'd like to preface my nomination by the fact that I just came back from California, which I think might be another country, but I went by the City Hall of San Diego, and there is a statement over the door. It said, "The highest motive is the common good," as our president alluded to earlier in her remarks, and the person I'd like to nominate for the vice presidency embodies that as well as anybody I know, and that would be Kathy Mitchell.
Oh, thank you, and thank you. Kathy Mitchell, do you accept the nomination for vice president?
I do, and I would be pleased and proud.
Are there other nominations? And are there other nominations? The nominations being closed and there being one candidate, the chair seeks unanimous consent for the election of Kathy Mitchell as the city council vice president. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Congratulations, Vice President Mitchell. Stay well, President Kincaid. Do you have a, like, speech or something? The next order of business is really when we get down to work, and that is, Item Four is consideration of appointments of council members to boards, commissions, and committees. Before I begin this year's process, I just would note that there was a letter in your packet from Vice President Mitchell noting that the Appointments Committee, with all of your input, is in the process of reviewing our boards, commissions, and committees. There are twenty-two of them that we will be addressing today, so I hope you had a chance just to read over that letter and know that today we are where we've always been, but we may not be there this whole year. Is that a fair way to say it, I think? Okay. And to help you kind of think through this, we'll just go through this process also as a review. Councilmembers have by now carefully made their selections for service on boards, commissions, and committees. You've weighed your interest and your strengths and your ability to actually do the work. That's a consideration. Time is a very valid consideration, and thank you all for your willingness to do this extra work. Appointments are for one term; they change every April. So, seats are filled on boards and commissions using this chart before you. You go right down the chart, all twenty-two. The list is in alphabetical order except EPAC, which has been moved to follow the RDA because those two positions are connected. The chair will offer each appointment to the council, and will begin by asking if there's anyone on the list who wants to remove their name. You can remove your name unilaterally, doesn't take any other action than your own words. Then the chair will ask if there are people who want to add their name. You can also do that. It does not take a nomination, you can just add your name. Once we have the list in order, then people can speak to their interest about those things if you have the time and the interest and the expertise and you're available and can talk about all that stuff. If there are the same number of people interested in serving as there are seats open, I will also seek unanimous consent for that nominee. Otherwise, we do all of the voting in the open. It takes six votes to be appointed, except for the Plan Commission, which takes eight votes, and I'll let you know when you can vote for more than one person. Sometimes you can. Okay? Any questions about that? All right, let's start at the top of the list with the Advisory Commission on Sustainability. For this commission, Councilmember Kate Beaton and Councilmember Andrew Werther have expressed an interest. Do either of you want to remove your name?
I'd like to remove my name.
Does anyone, hopefully you don't either, else you don't have anyone. Does anyone want to add their name to this, for this consideration? And Councilmember Beaton, you can just push that same red bar and then your light goes out. Yep. Okay, there being one nominee, nominee for one seat on the Advisory Commission on Sustainability, the chair seeks unanimous consent to appoint Andrew Werthman to the Sustainability Commission. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And though, oh yeah, do you want to make a speech?
No.
Okay. Yeah, anyone can make a speech who wants to. This is our meeting, we can do whatever we want. Okay, congratulations, Councilmember Werthman. And the Advisory Committee on Appointments, Council President Kincaid, Council Vice President Mitchell, and Councilmember Catherine Emanuel have signed up for three seats. Does anyone want to remove their name? Does anyone want to add their name? We have three members for three seats. The chair offers that slate and asks all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Okay. For the Affirmative Action Committee, there are two seats, Catherine Emanuel and, oh, I guess I'm just going to use your first names, otherwise it's too much. Okay? Are you all right with that? Catherine Emanuel and Michael Jeong have signed up for two seats. Do either of you want to remove your names? Does anyone else want to add their name? There being two candidates for two seats, the chair moves that slate and asks all those in favor of that slate to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Congratulations. To the Chippewa Valley Innovation Center, there is one seat open, and Bob Van Hayden has expressed his interest in serving on the Innovation Center. Are you still interested? Does anyone else want to add their name to this appointment? There being one candidate for one seat, the chair moves Councilmember Van Hayden and asks all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Congratulations. That's an interesting vote. And to the Chippewa Valley Sports Commission, Councilmembers T-Walt and Councilmember Jeong have expressed an interest for one, but there is one seat available. Do either of you wish to remove your name from the sports commission? Okay, then we get, oh, good, it's our first ballot. So, I would call by alphabetical order if Mr. T., or Tim T-Walt would talk a little bit about his interest in qualifications and availability for the sports commission.
Thank you. After reviewing that, I'm interested in helping advance more sports and activities within the area I was connected with.
After reviewing the charge of that, when did we get the red buttons? I looked at the qualifications and thought it made a good fit, my interest in the community, my interest in getting more involved, and it looked like a fit. I was active at North High School with the band program and others, and while there's certainly, I would certainly vote for Councilmember Jeong as well, so I will let him talk and hear that, so.
Thank you. Thank you. When I was young, I played soccer for many, many years in Eau Claire, and now my kids all play sport in Eau Claire as well, and I felt like I can contribute something to it. I feel like we need people who experience in this sports events. I think we can draw more people in town, especially you who play soccer. We, Eau Claire, each year, we have more people, more people play soccer, so something that we want to, because it's a national sport, so I hope that if I vote to, I point that there's something that I want to pursue more for soccer events, all the events in Eau Claire. Thank you.
Thank you both for making that statement and for your interest. Now I'll ask the city clerk to call for, we just raise our hands, and remember that someone needs six votes to be appointed, so if we don't accomplish that on the first ballot, then we just vote again. Madam?
For Councilmember T-Walt. Councilmember Jeong. Councilmember Jeong, eight.
Yes, you can vote for yourself. Next is the Fiscal Policy Advisory Committee. Usually, by our enabling resolution, three members, three council members serve on that committee. Two people have expressed an interest, Eric Larson and Dave Strobel. I realize sometimes I'm going back and forth between council member and your first name, so I apologize for that. So, here we are with two people who are interested, and so the chair would ask if anyone else has become interested in placing their name on this list. Anyone? Okay, then, oh, Councilmember Van Hayden?
Yes, I'll transfer my, or add my name to the list.
Now, we have three people who are interested. We didn't have to have three people, but, you know, I hope you don't, no one should feel pressured to put their name in, you don't have to. We have Councilmembers Larson, Strobel, and Van Hayden. Now, does anyone want to remove their name from the list? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't wish to remove my name, but could you explain the process of what if we have that situation where there is a blank slate and nobody steps forward? What do we do in that case?
Well, we don't force council members to serve on board, commissioner, committee. I have been asked that question this week. I have been asked that question this weekend. We, we just don't insist that you serve on a Board, Commission, or Committee. That has been, I believe it would be called an unstated practice of this body. So, it goes unfilled, and then sometimes a person decides later in the year that that works for them, or sometimes the Commission itself reexamines whether a councilmember is needed or is appropriate. So, I think what you're asking is that we, no, we don't force people to sign up. We do oftentimes have people, and there's a blank thing there, and say, okay, sort of, well, I'll do it, but they don't have to. Is that, you look like you still have a question.
Thank you. I, I don't think I was, well, I'm certain I wasn't under the impression that anybody forces anybody to serve, I'm more curious about what happens when we say we're not going to serve, and then there's an empty spot, and I think you've answered that, so thank you.
And you can see that's coming up, you know, yeah, a couple of them. Dave?
I think we just wait for the first meeting, when someone doesn't show up, and we put them in there.
We could adopt that as our unstated protocol, also. So, back to Fiscal Policy Advisory Committee, we have three people who are interested. The Chair would put that slate of officers, or slate of candidates on the floor, and say, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed. We have our appointments to fist pack, as we affectionately call it. To the City County Board of Health, we have, Councilmember Mitchell has expressed an interest, there's one place, are you still interested, Councilmember Mitchell? And does anyone else want to add their name? There being one candidate for one seat, the Chair would say, those who are in favor of that appointment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. And that appointment is made. To the Housing Authority, Council President Kincaid has offered her service. You might note that Councilmember Zhang was on the Housing Authority prior, and did not have an interest in continuing to serve on the Housing Authority, so we had a nice conversation about that, and it's an area that interests me, the whole housing area interests me. So, does anyone else want to add their name to the Housing Authority consideration? There being one candidate, then, the Chair would say, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. And to the Joint Commission on Shared Services, Councilmember, or Council President serves by virtue of the office this year, Councilmember T. Walt has also expressed an interest. We do have three seats on the Joint Commission. Are you still interested, Councilmember T. Walt?
Yes, it's a very fun group.
Yes. If you want to have fun, join this group.
That's right.
Does anyone else want to add their name to the Joint Commission? Oh, the Joint Commission is a shared commission of the school district and the county. Four members from each of those three bodies serve, so there are 12 members. There's a strategic plan, and we are in the process of implementing that strategic plan that was built in 2010 or 11, I think. So we're kind of winding our way through that implementation.
I would like to add my name to that.
Okay. In the past, we have tackled, we have tackled joint, I guess, can I call it, wellness and health insurance for the three bodies. We have taken a look at whether the Housing Authority should be co-located or co-administered, administrated. We looked, we looked at school busing issues one year, and purchasing, we have a joint purchasing seat, so I think that's probably representative, it's not the whole breadth of what we're looking at, but it's representative. The, the goal is to gain effectiveness through sharing, that's the whole. Anyone else then interested? So we have Councilmembers T. Walt and Klinkhammer and Kincaid by virtue of the office. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Thank you. And to the Landmark, oh.
I think you forgot the housing.
No, I just said that. I even made a speech about it. Next we have the Landmarks Commission. Councilmember Strobel has served well on the Landmarks Commission, and brought a lot of expertise to that commission, and he is expressing a desire to continue. Are you still interested?
I am, thank you.
Is anyone else interested in adding their name? There being one person for one office, the, it's so hard to word this, the Chair says, or offers an appointment of Councilmember Strobel, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. And that appointment is made. And to the Library Board, Councilmember Klinkhammer serves now and wants to keep serving. Do you still want your name on there?
I do.
Anyone else? There being one name for one slot, the Chair appoints Councilmember Klinkhammer and signifies those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Councilmember Klinkhammer. To the Plan Commission, this appointment is the one that requires eight affirmative votes. There are three members interested in two slots, Councilmembers Beaton, Larson, and Mitchell. Councilmembers Larson and Mitchell serve now on the Plan Commission. Does anyone wish to remove their name from consideration?
I'd like to remove my name.
Councilmember Beaton removes her name. Does anyone want to add their name? There being two councilmembers for two slots, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. The Putnam Park Commission, there are, there's our slots for two members on the Putnam Park Commission, Councilmembers Beaton, T. Walt, and Worthman have expressed an interest. Does anyone want to remove their name from this consideration?
I will.
Councilmember T. Walt removes his name, which means Councilmembers Beaton and Worthman remain for two seats. And those appointments are made on a motion to offer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And to the Redevelopment Authority, oh, this needs nine votes. Really? I just read that, is that true? I've been skipping over that all these years.
No, you haven't, we're just figuring it out.
Oh, dang.
We just noticed.
Okay. Well, we need nine votes. That must be their, their bylaws. Oh, okay. Okay. Councilmember Klinkhammer serves on the RDA and wishes to continue serving still. Anyone else want to add their name? All those in favor of Councilmember Klinkhammer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Unanimous consent.
Madam President, may I just say that our, our project in reviewing committees has turned up all sorts of interesting things, this was one of them.
Okay. I'm such a detail person, then, I would have caught that eventually.
Yeah, really?
Okay, now we're to the Economic Policy Advisory Committee. Councilmember Klinkhammer serves on that now because by virtue of serving on the RDA and the bylaws of EPAC, Councilmembers Emanuel and Larson have also expressed an interest. Are you still interested, both? Anyone else want to add their name? There being three candidates, the Chair offers those candidates and says, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. And now we are to the Revolving Loan Fund Committee, for which no one has signed up. So here we are at an example of your question. Does anyone wish to add their name to the Revolving Loan Fund Committee?
I just have a question about the Revolving Loan Fund?
Uh huh, sure.
Have they met recently, or, they don't even meet more than once or twice a year, correct?
It's my understanding that they meet a minimum of twice a year. They do need to approve the upcoming agenda for next week. They will be meeting tomorrow. They approve the Revolving Loan Fund, outstanding loans, review the reports, and that is then forwarded to the EVA. So, they may need to be cleaned, but it's a normal number.
What time do they meet tomorrow?
Ten a.m.
I'll, I'll put my name on the list.
No, that made me think maybe we have to have a councilmember on that. Do you know? But anyway, we have Andrew, who said he'd do it. Okay, one person, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. To the Seven Mile Creek Landfill Standing Committee, no one has put their name in, does anyone developed an interest in the landfill committee? I actually, oh, are you interested?
Well, could you tell us more about this meeting and what times?
I, I have to declare ignorance, I think Councilmember Larson has served on it.
Thank you, I've had the honor of serving on that committee for three years now, and I can't think of a more capable person to leave that to. No, it's, we, they met, they meet quarterly at the Seymour Town Hall about, I think it's 5:30, and the, the committee receives updates on different things that are going on at the landfill. Everyone shares whether they've received complaints about anything at the landfill, and it's just sort of keeping track of how things are going there and how it's affecting the, the neighborhood.
Much of my previous life experience, I do believe, has prepared me for this, so I would like to add my name if you would so willingly put it.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, Councilmember T. Walt, thank you. To the Special Assessment Differment Committee, Councilmember Van Hayden has expressed an interest in continuing your service, right, Bob? I think you said, no. Anyone else interested in that committee? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, Councilmember Van Hayden. And to the Transit Commission, we have one appointment to the Transit Commission, Councilmembers Beaton and Zhang have expressed an interest. Are you both still interested? Okay. And so now you get to speak to, to your interest, and we'll just go, we'll go reverse alphabetically as Councilmember Zhang is always last, this time you're first.
Thank you. It was a pleasure to serve this Transit Committee for the last two years, and I love this, this is a great committee, we had done a great thing there, created new policies, and especially the new owners that we just did pass a couple months ago, that helped the citizen to access to the city bus easy, I mean, that's, that's a great thing that we've done that, and I was happy that I'm part of that, that commission. Secondly, I'm really into that Transit Center, and I thought that'd be a great idea for the citizens in this community, they really deserve a better Transit Center, and if I, I will support this again if I got a vote into this community, this commission, and I hope that I can support it. Thank you.
And Councilmember Beaton?
I am a choice writer of the Transit, the Transit System, which means I have the privilege to be able to choose whether or not I use the Transit System, and I do happily use it from occasion, on occasion, and, but I do think that our Transit System is a major resource for people who don't have the choice to use it. It's, it's a, a resource that they use to get, you know, home, to work, to the hospital, to the grocery store, and I would really love to see it stronger and growing as I think it already is, and I want to be a part of that. I think it's also an environmental resource in that it offers an alternative type of transportation for our community, and so I think that with the new Transit Center relocation study, it's a really exciting time for our Transit System, and I would be honored to, to help to build that up, so, thank you.
Okay, and now the city clerk will call the names in alphabetical order, and we will vote by raise of, a raise of hands.
Councilmember Beaton, two votes, Councilmember Zhang, nine.
Okay. And congratulations, Councilmember Zhang, and thank you for your interest, Councilmember Beaton. To the Utility Appeals Board, Councilmember T. Walt expressed an interest, any, but are you still interested?
No.
Anyone else want to put their name in? And all those in favor of Councilmember T. Walt's nomination, or election appointment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. And to the Visit Eau Claire Board, three members have expressed an interest in two seats, Councilmembers Emanuel, Larson, and Strobel. Do you all wish to remain on the ballot? We would happily hear from all three of you, and we'll start alphabetically. Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I've had the privilege of serving on Visit Eau Claire since, I think, the fall of 2012. Ideally, under, under most circumstances, Visit Eau Claire wants to have their board members serve for a six-year term, and so hopefully I'll be able to do that. As you know, we have taken significant changes this year, including a new partnership and a funding stream with the city that the board helped to create. One of the things that I'm looking forward to if I'm selected to continue to serve on Visit Eau Claire is to be the new Chair of a committee that's called Destination Development. I was recently appointed by the President of the Board, and my first meeting will be in May to chair if I serve on Visit Eau Claire again. And that is really finding ways and being a leader in the tourism of how do we market our backyard and develop our backyard to invite tourists here. There's a phrase in tourism that I've grown to really appreciate, and that is, what's good for the locals is also benefited and enjoyed by tourism. And so we don't think of everything just for tourists, we think about what can we do for locals, and then the tourism follows, so I would appreciate your support if I'm back on. That's my intention, to serve on that committee and chair that committee, and to be a bridge here to our body between issues and opportunities that come up between Visit Eau Claire and the city.
Thank you. And Council, Councilmember Larson?
Thank you. I, I served on Visit Eau Claire my first year on City Council three years ago, and enjoyed it very much. I, I do recognize the importance of making Eau Claire, I think Councilmember Emanuel is correct, that what's good for our community is also good for the expansion of our community and the income that comes from, from the tourism that is developed through the programs and so on that Visit Eau Claire is responsible for. And I enjoyed being a part of that. Then I was pried from my cold dead fingers two years ago, and so I lost it. I know. I know. So, I decided I'd really like to get back on Visit Eau Claire Board. In the meantime, though, I have, I have missed being part of that, but as I remembered that there was some suggestion that was brought up periodically at the Board meetings, that the city review its special events plan. And so in the meantime, after I was off- And so in the meantime, after I was off of the board, I researched that a little bit, worked with staff and Councilmember Emanuel to have us review that special events policy and procedure. And some ordinance changes were made as a result, and some policy changes. And I think by and large, it has simplified the system very much and made it easier for for programs and Visit O'Clare in particular to proceed with their special events. So I've sort of kept my fingers in it over the years and would appreciate an opportunity to go back.
And Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. Keep those fingers out of it. I guess I'm the one that must have pried. I started out in the Sports Commission with Visit O'Clare the first year, and then the last two years I actually have served on the Visit O'Clare Board. Enjoy, I enjoy it a lot. I didn't realize that they'd like us to serve a six-year term, so I'm sort of thinking I'm on my way to that if that's helpful for anybody. But they've gone through quite a bit of turnover lately. They've got a brand-new, a bunch of board, brand-new board members, and then also the staff and stuff has gone through a lot of turnover. So I think after a couple of years, you sort of learn the ropes a little bit and you add a little, I think I would add some stability to that. And one of the other things I might, might mention, my fellow council members and potentially my other competitors as well, is, you know, attendance. Carrie said it's important if you have time to attend these meetings. They don't, they don't schedule around you. They schedule their meetings at a certain time. And they've had, they had six meetings last year, and I attended every one of them, including the strategic planning meeting. So I had 100% attendance, and I think if you don't, if you don't attend, you can't really contribute. And, and so I guess that would be, that would be my pitch. I can attend, and I think I do contribute to that. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Are you ready? Councilmember Larson? More statement?
As much as I regret this, I think Mr. Strobel brought up a very good point. I do want this committee to be served well. And since my last service, I have taken a part-time job that could interfere with some of my ability to attend those meetings there. They're at 10 o'clock in the morning on Wednesdays, and there's a strong possibility that my work schedule would conflict. And I, as much as I'd like to serve on the committee, I think the committee would be better served by someone who can actually be there each time. So I will withdraw my name.
Thank you. An honorable thing to do. So there are two candidates for two spots, and the chair asks, of all those in favor of appointing Councilmember Emanuel and Strobel, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you. I love working with this group. We're good. So, um... Now, you'll notice that the Cultural Grants Committee of Visit O'Clare, we forgot to add that when we sent out the initial list. So are, are, do people have questions about that committee, or is there an interest? Does anyone want to put their name? You want to put your name on that?
I'll add my name, along with the many others I assume.
Okay. Anyone else? I do have a question for those of you who want to serve, who serve on Visit O'Clare. If we don't make this appointment, then will the Visit O'Clare Board make? How does that go? Councilmember Emanuel?
Maybe our city manager, excuse me, city attorney would correct me if I'm saying this incorrectly. It's my understanding that the city council kind of insisted on having two of its, two of us on the grants committee because of our funding change, going from 60 to 40 to 70 to 30 approximately. I, I don't think Visit O'Clare asked for that, but I think they agreed to it because there was enough people at the time who wanted that. Now, it is possible, and I don't want to speak for Councilmember Strobel, but every, every person who serves on a Visit O'Clare, on the Visit O'Clare Board, is expected to serve on a committee. So if Councilmember Strobel wanted to serve on the grants committee, and Councilmember T. Walt did, that would satisfy the two. I am not suggesting or volunteering Councilmember Strobel. I'm already on another committee that I'm chairing on Visit O'Clare, but that's how that would work. Does that answer it?
So does any, I think Councilmembers Von Hayden and Worthman served in this interim, right? Councilmember Beaton?
Does anyone know when they meet, when the, when the board, the committee meets?
Meetings are held bimonthly on the fourth Thursday at 3:00 P.M.
If I may, this committee only meets once. However, or maybe, oh, two times, sorry, two times a year. There's a two, what it is, is the biggest commitment to this committee is spending some time reviewing the applications for the grants. Once you do your review of the grants, the meeting itself is relatively short and easy, and you go through two processes. There's twice during the year, and so it's basically two meetings a year, but there is a fair amount of prep time for it. And so if you like looking, reading grant applications and evaluating them and marking down pluses and minuses, you'd be a great person for it.
And they are at 3:00 P.M.? Is that right? No? Okay, just whenever. I'd like to add my name.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just also add for those who are considering serving, the historical, I think, value of having a council member on this, and I'll say in full disclosure, I was not in support of adding council members, but I agree with it because it's what the body chose to do. Historically, the city council during the November budget hearings would allocate some of the hotel room tax dollars to a certain amount of groups, including some reoccurring groups. And because Visit O'Clare is now doing the allocating, I think the role of the council member, one of the roles is kind of a watchdog to make sure, are those user groups still getting a comparable amount of funding? Are they being treated fairly, et cetera? So it's kind of a liaison from our old process to the new process, and to make sure there's a continuity of funding for the groups that depend on those dollars.
Okay. Councilmember T. Walt?
Question. Councilmember Strobel, or Councilmember Emanuel, are you considering being also over this committee since it would count? You could add your name, as Catherine had said, as one of the two. So I'm just... Okay. Okay. At this time, I had forgotten when I read the original review. I confuse this with another committee, and I'm going to hold off unless needed later. So I'd like to remove.
So Councilmember Beaton is still interested? Anyone else? We'll just go with one appointment then and wait to hear from Visit O'Clare. Is that sound fair?
I'll add my name. I'll add my name.
Councilmember Worthman has suddenly expressed an interest. Do you want to speak to your interests?
It's, I think it's important to have council, to have both of those filled, and it's important to have council representation, because this is funding that we previous, a lot of this funding we previously were overseeing. And so it's important that we continue to have some part in that process. And it's, it's, it's only a lot of work right around the time that the meetings come up. They send you a packet of 200 pages, and you have to figure out how you're going to rank all these different organizations in the city. But it's really important work, and I want to make sure that we have representation, so...
Okay. Thank you. Those in favor of appointing Councilmembers Beaton and Worthman signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you both. Which are our last appointment, which is Waterways and Parks Commission. Three members have expressed an interest in serving on the waterways. Do I, any of you wish to remove your name?
Madam President?
Councilmember Worthman?
If I may, remove my name from consideration.
Councilmember Worthman is removing his name from consideration. Does anyone wish to add their name? Okay. Okay. Can you, Councilmember Von Hayden has served a lot on waterways and parks. Can you give us a little synopsis of the breadth of that work?
Yes. Waterways and Parks takes a good look at what happens within the community that relates to the rivers, to Half Moon Lake. We spent a lot of time on Half Moon Lake over the years, and there's been a real process there of regenerating and making the lake more usable. And hopefully, within a few years, we can get back to having more swimming in the lake. We've taken a lot of look at the situation that we have with the geese problems and some of the other things. We've worked with, obviously, the city council has, and the waterways and parks have talked about the deer problem, some of the other things. It's, it's a committee that primarily takes a look. The main reason that I've been on it for a number of years, and my, my real strength to, strong feeling for it was, is I live right above Rod and Gun Park and, and Half Moon Lake. And I think it was very important to make sure we renovated and upgraded Rod and Gun Park, and at the same time, we worked on the Half Moon Lake process. The other thing was, one of the things was getting the waterways planned, so that, like when we had the Confluence project down here, we took a hard look at it and said, okay, how do the buildings complement the waterways? How do we work together? And to make sure that we push back the buildings enough so that we had ample space between the buildings and the waterways, so we could get our trails and our public spaces. Another thing will be, of course, now we'll be looking at, as we go forward, we'll be looking at in the Cannery District, the park along the river there. And so I think there's a lot of interesting things still coming forward for waterways and parks, and I look forward to working with Kate and making sure that we protect our waterways and make sure that they're usable for all of the citizens and keep things clean and pristine and workable.
Thank you, thanks for that. Councilmember Clint Hammer?
Is it too late to throw my hat in the ring for this?
No.
I would like to add, and I have served on it, it's been a number of years, and I have missed being on that commission. I would like to be on it.
Okay. So would you like, let's see, we should, we'll do our alphabetical thing, because now we have three candidates for two spots.
Could I say something?
Sure. Okay.
I, I'm really interested in being on this, this commission. I think that our waterways are our most valuable asset to this community in that they define our community, for our citizens and for the tourists in this community. I think that they're also the most vulnerable, so I think that this commission is extremely important. I also should say that I did research in college on our waterways, which I think gives me a unique perspective. I have, I've been right up in there, taken samples of our own waterways, and so I have, I have some, you know, knowledge that may be more unique to the, to the commission. So I'm very interested in serving on this.
Okay, thanks. And by alphabet, Councilmember Clint Hammer, do you have any more to add?
I think I've already overstepped my bounds and spoke already.
Councilmember Von Hayden?
I, you know, I've already stated why I'd like to be on it and continue, so I'd rather than going through a detail, it's, we'll just let it go with that.
Okay. There are three people for two positions, and so council members can cast two ballots. This is the first time we've been able to do this. You can, you can cast two votes. So when we vote alphabetically, we'll start with Councilmember Beaton, and then you could vote for, you can vote for two people, okay? And Donna's very good at math, so if the math doesn't add up, then we start over. Twenty-two, that's the magic. Okay. You ready?
Councilmember Beaton? Councilmember Clint Hammer? Councilmember Von Hayden? Councilmember Beaton, four votes. Clint Hammer, eight. Von Hayden, ten.
Thank you for those, that service. We are now at the end of all of our appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Thank you for the honorable way we proceed through that process. I had a call today from the city, or the mayor's office in Madison, asking how we make appointments to boards, commissions, and committees, because they, they're having some internal, they're wanting to change up their process. They were amazed at, at our process, how open it is, how, how flat it is in Madison. The council president just makes all of the appointments. They were amazed at our, at our, at our thing. I mean, you know, it could be worse. And I'm amazed at it, too. We do, we do well. Next on our agenda, item five, is a determination of council chamber seating arrangement. By tradition, the city clerk passes a hat with little numbers in it. So she'll put the hat in front of you, and you just reach in and pull a number, other than the seat and the vice president's seat are predetermined. Otherwise, that is seat one, and they go around to 11. So, and if you would hang, hang on to your number, and when she's done, then we can help her by telling her which number we pulled. I always get that question, but... When we arrive on Monday, the, the council seats will be arranged per the selection. Next on our agenda is a presentation... Next on our agenda is a presentation, I believe, by the city manager, reviewing the roles of the council manager form of government, and perhaps the city attorney, I'm not sure. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. I'd like to start by reiterating what's already been stated, and that is, first, thank you for your service. This form of government would not work without your service, and please know that myself and our staff are deeply appreciative of the time and effort and service that you put into making this work. So, thank you for that. Then, we were going to move into this breathtaking and gripping presentation that the city attorney and I had, that was going to hold you in your seat. But for fear that, the fact that most of you are going to the chamber dinner, which the social hour has already started, I think we're going to go into an incredibly abbreviated version of that.
That was a good slide there.
So, with that.
There's 30 or 40 more.
Yeah, right. With that said, a couple of quick things. We are putting together a new council member orientation packet, and on Friday afternoon, we'll be trying that out for the first time on Councilmember Beaton, and it's going to be probably at least a couple hours of time, going through a lot of materials and background, and helping, you know, her feel comfortable and welcome to the process, and what it's about to be in the City Council, as well as some time that's being, going to be spent with the council president. We've also extended that to Councilmember Tewalt, and we'll be doing that as well. For others who would like to perhaps do that, we'd be happy to, you know, spend that time with you, if you'd like. And we're also planning on a bus tour at some point, where we can take you around. And some of the material that we would have otherwise gone through tonight, we will perhaps share with you as we go through that bus tour. So, very quickly, the highlights of what we have, and we're not going to go through all that, but just know that the council handbook is online, and there's a lot of materials you can see there on the screen that are available, you know, to you there. And I guess I would just wrap this up by saying that this works when we have good information, and our job is to help you make decisions. Our job is to help you solve problems, and to the extent that you can have your questions routed through the city manager's office, or at times, going to a department director, we want to get you information that helps facilitate your ability to make good decisions and to solve problems. And so, with that, unless the city attorney is just itching to have to go through legal issues of open records and public records and electronic communication, I think we will just call this an end, and we will go through more of that material on the tour when we get that scheduled for you. Unless anybody has any specific questions, again, thank you very much for your service, and for those of you that are going to the chamber dinner, we will see you over there.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, the Friday, is it this coming Friday?
It's this coming Friday.
And it's only specifically for the?
Well, at this point, we had invited Councilmember Beaton to come to that, and we were going to have more of a one-on-one, you know, with that. Again, it's also, we're putting in a lot of materials and things, so she's kind of the first time with that, and then also some time with Council President Kincaid. And I had not scheduled a time with Councilmember Tewalt, but perhaps with that, we could, if you're interested, we could extend that to more people at that time that might want to come and hear the materials.
Mr. Peters, does your part of Friday include a tour?
No.
No?
No. It's just going to be materials and background information.
It's all informational and in chambers?
Mm-hmm.
So, if you want, you're welcome.
Yeah, you're welcome to come if you want.
Okay.
I believe we're starting at?
One.
One o'clock?
One. So, are you, your city attorney's fine?
Your city attorney recognizes the issue, but he does advise you that this issue has been getting worse, and this is now officially the worst it's been like this. So, the issues are important. They are covered and summarized in what is a good council handbook. Certainly, it's good to update it, but we added new information to it from the legal department, again, this year on closed sessions. And issues such as the open meetings law, the public records law, your ethics law, you know, how to handle parliamentary procedure, which, again, I got a whole lot of questions on just leading into the last meeting, which is covered in one of these slides about, you know, when you postpone to a time certain to really mean it, and, you know, if this body postpones to the next legislative session, that's what it really means, as opposed to postponing with direction to hold a Monday meeting. So, all those issues are covered in this slide, and are also covered in your handbook. So, they're important, they're important to you personally, since most of the issues are personal liability issues, but they're also important to us corporately, and to continue to do the type of good service that the council president mentioned in her introduction. So, I think as a group, we should find an alternative to this, if it continues as it has for about a decade, the conflict since the chamber moved, and we're set on a statutory date to serve that function in other means.
Your point is very well taken, and I apologize that we have this time constraint, and we're all, you know, really watching our watches, and it's not optimal. And I hope that we, as a body, could soon agree to a session time in which we review parliamentary procedure, and review the points, the ethics points that you, that it's really important for us to think about. So, with apology, we'll schedule a time when we can agree together that we can have that important discussion. Okay. So, are there any other announcements? Mr. City Manager?
None.
Oh.
None.
Okay. Under motion, then, by Councilmember Beaton. Second invite, Councilmember Wirthman. This meeting is adjourned without objection.
This was a rebroadcast of the O'Clare City Council meeting. This program was recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling 715-839-5067, or on the web at www.cvctv.org.